They make a beeline straightforward that's deeper than what it used to be.
Can't see the clock here. Covered up the clock.
Okay, oh, um, can you pull this one up or that one up? We're gonna get that out of there, just for that tab. They've got. It's in the packet. That's the one we pretty much be talking about, so. Yeah, I think so. If you, if the packet one's easier to pull.
All right, I'd like to call the August Boiling Springs Town Council meeting to order. First item of business is adoption of the agenda. If it pleases the council, I would request that we could move item five up to the next, just up above, public comment, Mr. Shields with the beginning of school and athletics underway has a couple places to be at once. Appreciate his presence here tonight. Otherwise, are there any other adjustments?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Edwards with the motion to adopt the agenda with that amendment to move item five up.
Second.
Second from Mr. Thomas, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that carries unanimously. And so Crest High School Athletics Recognition, Mr. Shields, if you could come up.
This is proclamation recognizing Crest High School Athletics, whereas the town of Boiling Springs and the Boiling Springs Town Council takes extreme pride in recognizing the academic accomplishments and athletic feats of all schools in Boiling Springs and whereas one of these schools, Crest High School Tennis, made it to the NC State Tournament and whereas the Crest High School Tennis team placed in the top four in the state tournament. And whereas the Crest High School Men's Tennis, Men's Cross Country, Football and Basketball Cheerleaders all held the highest GPA of any team in the state. And whereas the town of Boiling Springs and the Boiling Springs Town Council recognizes the accomplishments of Crest High School Athletics. And whereas these accomplishments bring statewide recognition and distinction to all of Boiling Springs and Cleveland County. Now therefore, the Boiling Springs Town Council hereby recognizes Crest High School Athletics students and coaches for their accomplishments. Proclaimed this second day of August twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Mr. Shields.
Thanks, Mayor.
Are there any citizens present that would like to comment on something other than an item on the agenda? All right, hearing none. Counsel, you have the minutes before you from the July twelfth meeting.
I move the minutes to be adopted as print.
All right, Mr. Green with that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Gant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise, and that is unanimous. Gardner Web University update.
Made it on time.
That's right.
Thanks again for letting me be here, I always enjoy getting to come share some updates and I'll keep it brief, there's a lot going on, I could probably take an hour. Couple highlights here, though, we are excited to announce a five hundred thousand dollar allocation for the university in the most recent state budget. We're grateful for the partnership from the county, elected officials, Justin even jumped in with us on some of this for their ideas and their work to help make this happen. This is a first of its kind for us, state dollars coming to a private institution. If you're wondering what is it going to, it's going to the amphitheater project, so a very public facing opportunity that I think we all believe that the town, the college, or the university and even the county will benefit from. The other question I get on timelines is when are we breaking ground? You guys know there's a long and extensive punch list that has to take place selecting contractors, et cetera, et cetera. Our goal is to break ground in early fall, so giving you a rough guess there. Students are starting to trickle back to campus, so you're probably starting to see the younger faces around town running around in flip flops and shorts, it's something that you just don't quite see in the summer for whatever reason. Anyway, most athletes right now, August thirteenth, I believe it is, the rest of our students move back. Mr. May, I believe you're actually giving an address that day as well, so getting them fired up for all the potential and opportunity that they're walking into. Colleges of Distinction, a unique guide for both college bound students. It's one of the things that potential families can go out and Google and start learning information about universities and colleges across the country. Recognize Gardner Web for its commitment to encourage and challenge undergraduate students in their Christian growth. We are the only university in North Carolina that actually received this designation in this past year, so it is the Christian College of Distinction, so we're pretty proud of that. And then, believe it or not, last but not least, first football game is less than thirty days away. Blackout game, limestone, it's a Thursday night, so it's not taking up your whole weekend this time. Come out, wear your black, should have fireworks afterwards, hope to see you all there, so, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, update from the YMCA.
Hello, thank you for letting me come again tonight and speak to you, and thank you so much for the the support that you give the YMCA, because we couldn't do it without you. I do have some copies for everybody, so I'm not gonna bore you with every little thing, so you can read it, so I'm just gonna lay it over here with Justin and he can pass it out later. So I'm just gonna hit some highlights. And while I was sitting there, I was thinking, oh, I should have said this and I should have said that, but then I'll, I'll remember that next time. We have had an amazing summer, I've never seen the pool rented so many times, I've never seen the basketball courts, everything being used so much. But in the spring, Justin gave me a list of town residents, so I could better give you, better give you some information about how many members or town residents we have as members. But this was the spring so that we did this, so we've had a lot more join since summer. But I, but this, this will give you an idea. Boiling Springs Town Residents, that's on just, just that discount, we've got eighty-seven units and two hundred and twenty-four members. But Boiling Springs Town Residents with other discounts, like where they work, military or whatever, we've got two hundred and twelve units to add to eighty-seven. But now I don't have, that's the units, I don't have how many people within each household. Because I forgot to tell my staff to put that part down, I apologize. And then we have, as far as staff discounts for the town, like law enforcement, the fire department, and then the town staff, we've got six units with twenty members. So we've got a total of three hundred and five family units that are members of the YMCA. But like I say, I don't have how many members that is in the units. We've got a new sports coordinator, his name is Jordan Frakaut, he's a, he is a student at Gardner Web. And he's very passionate about sports and about the kids, and he's gonna be amazing. I did put his information in here in case you wanted to reach out to him and ask him any questions about sports. In the spring, in Little League, we had a hundred and forty-eight participants, and then spring soccer, we had a hundred and eleven participants. Summer basketball, which the summer, summer sports is always low, but summer basketball, we had fifty-three, and summer volleyball, we had twenty-six. And we've got registration open now for baseball, soccer, volleyball, and flag football. We're hoping we can get flag football off the ground, if we can get enough participants. And in the library, we have a lot in there that we've, that we have had in the past, but some of the new stuff, we tried this year. We had two weeks of Lego camp, and it was very, received very well, we had an average of fifteen participants. So we see that growing and having more, these kids love Legos. So we see having, having more camps next year. And also, we have a church group that is renting the library every Sunday morning. This group was having, having church in their homes, so now they're renting out the library. So that's, we're excited about that. And then Green Bethel Baptist Church had their vacation Bible school with us. They had it on Thursday and Friday evening in the library, Saturday morning in the library, and then they had a block party at our pool, so, and they loved it, and they're gonna do it again next year. So we're excited to partner with them, because I've been wanting to get some partnerships with the churches and all, so we, we can, we can be there for them and help them. In our family department, normally we have a hundred and thirteen, that's usually been our high in summer camp. And this year, we've had an average of a hundred and forty every week. So this has been amazing, and then for the last week of summer camp, which is next week, we already have a hundred and forty-eight kids registered. So we've had to do a lot of shifting and all to make room for everybody, but, but we're excited about this. And we've had a safe summer, so other than maybe a bee sting or something, you know, we've, it's just been awesome. And now we've got after school, registration open, we'll have a five day, a three day, and then a year round. So we, we look forward to seeing what we can do for after school. And then we're continuing the A two I reading program, what I told you about last, the last time I met with you. We continued that through the summer, so we could keep the kids or help them to catch up with their reading and be ready for the next grade level that they're going into. So right now, we're in the middle of testing all of them to see how they've grown, so, so we've been glad to do that. The Turner Aquatic Center, we've got two more days that we're gonna offer for the town residents to come to the pool at no cost. It'll be August the thirteenth and September the fifth. So I'll need for you to put that on your Facebook page, I'll fix a flyer and put it for you, but. And then, of course, the last day of school, I mean, the first day of school's the seventeenth, so the pool will be closed during the week for that. But we'll open on family nights, Friday night is family night, and we'll be open weekends until Labor Day. But we're still booking parties through September. It's just amazing. We, we're continuing to give scholarships as well. And we give out a lot of scholarships, and sometime we've done hundred percent scholarships. That's one of the totals I meant to get to you, but I'll try to remember that next time. There is one exciting thing that I, I hope you'll be excited about, I've been talking to Justin about. The spheres at the, in front of the concession stand. I've been wanting to get them painted, like baseball and soccer balls and stuff. And so I've been talking to a girl that actually is, she does murals in Charlotte. But she's a friend of a friend of mine, so I've been reaching out to her to see if she could help us with that, because I want it to be done right, and I want it to be something that will last. So you know, the murals and how they do those is, is, withstands the weather, so soon as I find out something about that, I'll let you know, but it will make that pop out there, I think. All right, you have any questions?
I think a lot of town residents want those balls back on Main Street, so you might have a fight on your hands.
I heard that, I heard about that, yes, yes.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, an update from the Broad River Greenway? Mr. What?
Kim.
She's not here.
Yeah, she's not gonna be able to make it.
Tom Taylor, I'm with the Broad River Campground, work with Kim at the Greenway. I think one of the things you guys wanted me to talk about just a little bit is the easement access. So we have entered or looking to enter with you guys, Cleveland County and the Greenway, two access points. Primarily for our guests at our park to be able to enter the, the Greenway without having to use the road. Of course, we're campground, we've got golf carts. One thing we don't want them doing is jumping on the road, trying to get to the access point there on the north side, south side of the river. So we, we spoke with Kim and worked with the county and, and working with you guys as far as being able to allow our guests to be able to take a golf cart or hike down to the trail. We have a little parking pad that's on our property that they'll be able to stage at and then hike and enter into the Greenway and be able to catch the trails there. The secondary access points, just the way the topo, the land works out there for us, for phase two and three, it will be nice for us to be able to have a second, secondary access point for guests that are staying in phase two and three, for them to be able to go, there's some challenging hills out there for, so that's when we came up with the idea to be able to do two. Just from an emergency standpoint, it can help us as well. It's a UTV trail only, no cars or anything like that, and it's primarily, again, gonna be used for golf carts and just for maintenance. The agreement that we have in place is that we're gonna help with Lance, the park ranger down there, help maintain the park. Also help maintain the Greenway with cleanup of trash, removal of trees, whatever we need to do. I grew up with Lance, really good guy, we're here to help in, in any way. The campground has been a huge success, primarily due to the Greenway being of great assistance to us and allowing us to be able to utilize their facilities. We're extremely happy to be where we are and happy to answer any questions.
You guys have any concerns of trespassers coming on to the campground that are maybe not supposed to be?
We do have a wristband system in place, actually, and we're working through those details. I don't have a pool in yet, but when I get that pool, we'll probably have a few of those. We don't think, I mean, it's a good fifteen minute hike.
Yeah.
So it, it discourages a few in that direction, but if we do, we'll, you know, we'll use, we're gonna plan on using the wristband program to be able to monitor that in some fashion. And that also helps the Greenway get an idea of how many of our guests are using the Greenway as well, so yeah, it's a, we'll have to monitor it on a case by case scenario.
I'm on the Broadway Greenway Board as well, we met last night, and I'll just say that Kim and Mr. Jake Wistnett and Mr. Tom Jones were all just glowing about the partnership that, that you guys have developed and excited about the improvements that'll be made both to the Greenway and that will benefit both, and I, I was telling them that I've been excited to see Facebook posts about the Broad River Campground and the Greenway that just mentioned Boiling Springs, and I think that's, I think that's really good for our town, so I, I personally appreciate what you're doing.
We, we are overly excited, we want to do a, once, once things kind of calm down, I get my clubhouse open, we want to invite the entire county officials. Of course, all you guys to come out, we're gonna do a, like a Friday, like a drop in breakfast lunch, you know, maybe from eleven to three, give a tour of the campground. Anytime you guys want a private tour, call me or Jake, we're, we pretty much live there all the time, so we're happy to give you guys the inside, what we're thinking, what we're doing, if you guys have any suggestions, we're open for it, because this is a team effort. There's no way we'd be, I'd be standing here right now if it wasn't for all of you and multiple other council members and mentors and everyone else that's helped us, so. Very, very excited, it's been a huge success so far, the domes are, everybody's talking about those, but we're, we'll be at the sixth inning, or the seventh inning stretch festival, we have a little booth there Saturday, so if you me and Jake will be there, you know, shaking hands, get some babies, so if you see us, come by, say hey to us.
Yeah, another great example of private-public partnerships that we, we, you heard Gardner Web mention how important that was in getting the grant and funding and those things, and so I'm excited for you and I'm excited for the town.
Really appreciate y'all.
Yeah, I made it out there about a month ago, and it's a cool looking park, excited to, I was talking with Jake a little bit about the future developments and having little kids and everything, I think it's a great recreation spot locally.
It's, it's gonna be a good one, so I'm working on all the amenities right now, once I get all, you know, right now, it's, you get there and there's like, all right, what's there to do? So, of course, we have the river, but you know, everyone wants the pool and the dog parks and all that, so we're pushing hard towards that and the clubhouse and all that.
Are you keeping the lightning tree?
What's that?
Are you keeping the lightning tree?
We are keeping the lightning tree, yeah, so if you guys don't know, a quick story, the opening weekend, we opened on July first, which was a Friday. That Sunday, a massive storm came through and all the guests got, in the park, gathered in the bathhouse, because it was a pretty hectic storm. Lo and behold, the closest tree to the bathhouse got stripped down. Blew out concrete blocks on our retaining wall, bent the gutters, so of course, they exited the bathhouse very quickly after that. So now we have a huge tree that had, we had bark that was blown off a hundred foot, so I mean, what's the odds, right? It's the most beautiful tree in the whole campground, of course, it's gotta get hit, but, so we have a lightning tree, that's kind of our story now with it, so.
Now, from what I understand, there's more phases to be built.
There's two more phases, yeah, so phase one is, was, was, was the five domes, ten cabins, and sixteen RV sites. And then, of course, the clubhouse is lagging behind just a little bit, because it's a clubhouse and it's been a nightmare, but we're gonna get there. And then phase two will be roughly another thirty to forty sites, phase three the same, and we don't know the combination yet, we're, we're kind of letting phase one tell us what to do on phase two and three, but roughly a hundred to a hundred and fifty sites of a combination of many different things once we get the total bid out, which will hopefully be the spring of next year.
Wow, okay, that sounds good.
Sounds great.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, on to regular business. First item up here is discussing the downtown overlay district and the unified development ordinance. We created this downtown overlay district but didn't quite define it, and so you see Planning Board, you have the printed maps in front of you, council, and Planning Board has recommended areas one and two B. But this is up for discussion for the council.
Yes, sir, and just a point of clarification, in the packets, you have the maps that the Planning Board saw, that's where the recommendation for one and two B came from, and in the paper maps at your seats, that's just those two areas kind of put together, so just two different views. And Mr. Vaughn Hanson from Benchmark is here to kind of add, add to that a little bit and get some of your feedback, and our thinking for this overall process, not to steal any of his thunder, is we went to Planning Board last month, got their input, bringing it to you all now to get your input, and then we're gonna take it back through at least the formal process of taking it to Planning Board and you all again. But at some point in there, I think we want to have a community meeting to basically bring in the businesses and people that would be affected by the overlay district to say, this is what the plan is, this is how it might affect you in the future, but give them kind of a heads up of what everything's going on.
Thank you, as the mayor mentioned, in the new U D O, when it was adopted, we had a district in there, an overlay district that was in the ordinance in the text, but we chose not to apply it to the zoning map at the time the ordinance was adopted, just to limit the complexity of the action that was being taken to adopt the ordinance. And so you have a set of regulations in there, but no area to which they're applied currently. And Justin contacted me a little bit earlier this year, asked if we could assist with making some recommendations and working with the Planning Board initially on identifying an area to which this overlay district could apply. As you mentioned, as you've seen, there have been a recommendation from them at this point. The overlay district is intended to provide some guidance on the physical form of development in your downtown area. This would apply everything from the, the way that buildings address the lots and the streets in front of them to architectural design regulations, to certain types of limitations on uses such as drive-throughs. All in the interest of trying to foster a built environment that aligns better with your downtown master planning documents that have been prepared. And so really, the, the action in adopting an overlay district, this would be something like you have, you know, you have an airport overlay district, it applies an additional set of regulations to an area the underlying zoning, which I believe is mostly B one at this time in the downtown area. The regulations that exist for that in terms of things like the uses that are allowed, restaurant or a particular type of store, those remain in place. This would only address those things through the overlay district, having to do with the physical form of the development in that area. And so as Justin mentioned, it was, the, the concept was to go through a process of identifying that through the Planning Board and the, and the council before actually initiating a zoning map amendment, so there'd be some buy-in from both groups in terms of the area to which it would be applied before the formal process is started, so that a, a process of public engagement could occur before there's any action by anybody.
Comments or questions from council?
I had a comment, maybe a question, you know, I was a little curious as to why going north, why it stopped at Bethel Avenue.
Really, the, the character of the development really changes there when you get to the shopping center. The type of design regulations that are included in the downtown design overlay really wouldn't apply very well to a grocery store shopping center just because of the scale of the buildings and the nature of the existing development there. We tried to, in making the initial recommendations, tried to apply it only to those areas that would, that are more conducive to having this type of development regulation applied. So the grocery store development itself and the area around it and going north really aren't as, as conducive to that. And also because of some of the limitations and the form of development, we want to have a, you know, the suburban kind of auto oriented commercial development has its place in your community, so things like drive-through restaurants or a larger type of shopping center, there needs to be a place for those because that provides a healthy mix of different types of businesses, and so this would really limit some of that but provide for a more pedestrian friendly urban environment that is aligned better with the downtown plan. That's a long answer to a short question.
In that section three B, there's two very large parcels there.
And the one on the north side is, at one point, pending purchase. And then, of course, on the south side is turner trucking. Now, we don't perceive turner trucking going under, but there could be a time in the future that there's nobody in the family who wants to run it and they sell the business, it's absorbed and moved somewhere else. And that's a very, those are two very large parcels, uh, that could be developed some, at some point in the future.
I, I think as we, as we discussed with the Planning Board, you know, just like any other type of land use regulation in terms of the extent of the zoning district itself, uh, the Planning Board or the staff or the council could, in seeing some changing conditions on the ground emerging in the future, choose to either expand or contract the actual physical scope of application of the, of the district. Or could, you know, and even the regulations that apply within it could change those as well. And so, if, if a concern is that you might not be covering everything that would maybe need to, or you would want to be covered by this district, looking ten years down the road, you could reassess on some periodic basis, just like you would with, you know, looking at everything with your planning documents and your zoning regulations, um, whether or not you might need to expand in the future. So, this would, an action by the, the council within the coming months would not be the, the last opportunity that you would have to be able to determine what the scope of, of that should be.
And how does this affect Roosters since it's an existing building, but it's going to have to be retrofitted to be usable? They're, they're in one, correct?
Yeah, they're, they're right next to that large three, three B parcel you were referencing. Um, as they complete the designs to build that back, they'd have to adhere to the standards within the district.
Just the building to burn?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think that that building, um, since it's kind of a, a renovation of the existing building in the way that you apply, uh, the non-conforming provisions, uh, there's some, potentially some exceptions for certain types of situations like they had there. But we'd need to probably look at that a little bit more in terms of the extent of how that might affect an existing, because do you think they would remove the rest of it? Or would they try and use the same footprint and?
Yeah, their plans to put a roof on it and leave the walls.
So, they would use the same physical, you know. Um, it, I think in general, oh, the regulations really aren't, they're not extreme. It's not like a historic district in terms of how the, the regulations work. And so, there's no single design aesthetic that's trying to be achieved. And just my, my memory of that building is that it would have maybe not been at a hundred percent compliance, but there are, uh, the, the elements of that building that remain, I don't think there's really too much that would be necessarily out of character. I think it's probably further from the street than a new building would be required to be. But we're not, you know, if somebody's renovating a building in the overlay, we're not gonna require they tear something down and move it closer to the street, um, just to comply, if, if it's an existing site like that. But it, it could have some effect, uh, on them as they rebuild.
You, you think it would be easier for council to ease off of restrictions rather than tighten up? And so, go ahead and include some of these other ones, like three B, for example, in the downtown overlay district? And then, at some future point, you could, they could roll back. It seems like that might be easier than trying to clamp down when somebody buys the property.
Yeah, I, I think that, that could be, uh, a way to preclude something that you would perceive as, you know, maybe negative from occurring. Um, I think that the, and, you know, we put together this, the map based on, you know, just kind of what would be maybe the maximum extent that you would maybe want to, to go. Um, and the, the Planning Board has some discussions regarding how far, whether to go further east and include those or not. Their, their ultimate recommendation was to not include those and you might, you could of course have a different opinion about that. I think with the, the, the track that on the north side of the, the road, probably fewer potential issues in terms of the use of that property. Since I don't think there's really anything there right now, um, I would maybe not be concerned, but just aware of, you know, some potential consequences it might have for the ongoing operation of the business that is there now. I don't know exactly what, how that might affect them. Um, but, you know, it, it, it's, you know, not currently a, a downtown type of development on that parcel. And so, there could be, um, some unforeseen circumstance that might, um, affect them. But then, of course, if it did affect them, then you could remove the restriction to, uh, on their property.
But it could have a, a negative impact if we tried to renovate the Old Town Hall building and the Gardner Webb property there and there was some type of flip or turnaround. I mean, how would that affect the sale of that property or renovations going forward? And on the use that would go in there, or is that?
The use, the uses would be governed by the underlying zoning of that property. Was it, is it, uh, office institutional?
I think so.
Um, so, the uses would be governed by the underlying zoning district. Um, this would affect if, if you were, if somebody wanted to come in and, um, do some massive renovation of the building, it would likely trigger something. It, it's really more geared towards, um, new, new construction. It, it does apply to renovations. Um, any kind of exterior thing, any exterior work that would have a, that would change something that is regulated by the, the standards of the overlay. Um, but there are also a lot of things that really aren't regulated by it as well. And so, it's really a case by case basis and each, each particular use is gonna have different types of needs in terms of what somebody's thinking about putting in somewhere like that. Okay, thank you.
Do you need just general direction from council at this point?
Um, yes, sir. We'd like some, uh, some input on really the, the size of the district based on those parameters. And, um, again, not a, not a formal commitment to it, just, you know, this is kind of what we're thinking and then we'll go back through that process and start talking to folks.
Okay.
But does this help the towns position in dealing with those situations like the tattoo, uh, business and those type things, or is it just brand new builds? Is that, I mean, does it sort of help bringing things into line with our code base?
Yeah, definitely with brand new builds and then if anybody does a, um, like an exterior renovation that would affect the facade or like an awning or something on the front of the building. Um, so, it's, um, as Mr. Hanson said, if, uh, if Roosters rebuilds and they wanted to put an awning on the building, that might have to adhere to color standards or things like that, but they're not gonna have to shift the whole building forward, which if a new building, they'd have to build up to the street line.
So, it's helping us with uniformity and continuity?
Absolutely.
So, if we don't include three B, somebody buys that four point four acres and puts a general merchandise store in there, are we already protected as far as the setbacks from the road with the current ordinances in place?
I don't know that the setback applies. It, it's on East College, so some of the design standards apply.
There, there would be some, there, there are already some standards in place due to its location in a commercial zoning district and being on one of your main roads through town. There's a general applicability of some exterior building materials and color standards. Um, there's kind of a catch-all for things that aren't in the downtown overlay. In terms of the setbacks, though, it, it would be just whatever the setbacks are for the, the general district. And it would probably be a little bit, allowed to be a little bit further back, um, from the street right of way than would be mandated to be closer if something, building something new in the downtown design overlay. And that affects, could affect things like parking as well.
Well, it is a good, a good bit of, of ways from the core of the camp. I mean, i- i- in reference to Ingalls, it's probably as far, as far away from the stoplight there, the four point four acres as Ingalls is the other way.
Probably so.
So, I, I, uh, I'm fine with not including it at the present. But just a thought.
It's a good thought.
So, everyone's comfortable with one and two A? Is that, everybody's good with that, where we are? And it's just a question of three B and/or? Or not?
I, I'm good with one and two, was it two A or two B? I'm, uh, what is it?
Two B was right.
One and two B.
Oh, sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, one and two, yeah. So, am I?
One and two B?
I'm good with one and two B.
Yeah, do we need a motion or consensus?
Yeah, just, yeah, consensus is good.
I think we're good.
I think it really starts to bring forth our, um, visual branding beyond just, you know, signs welcoming us to town, right? It kind of leaves that brand mark when we get to downtown, so, uh, you know, in twenty-five years, when that's all changed, or thirty, whatever it is, you know, people will be able to drive in and go, oh, that, this is downtown, right? This is the visual marker. We're in the downtown zone now, so.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, there's a new dog in town. Time to talk about the new water tower rendering. Council, you have the designs in front of you. Mr. Manager, I'll let you fill us in.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, we've been, uh, discussing with Gardner Webb about, uh, repainting the water tower. Um, there is a new dog in town, so, uh, they want to, uh, bring him in bigger and better. Uh, he's a little bit bigger than the, than the previous dog that's on there. Um, so, you have some renderings in front of you. Um, wanted to, uh, to bring the design before you all for approval, uh, before we really nail down the, um, the cost and timeline. Um, that was the contractor's preferred method as well. So, really, I'm just looking for a, uh, an approval of the design, uh, tonight. I will say in one of the renderings, um, one community is cut off by the railing, so I did have them shift the text just slightly. Um, so, it won't be cut off, um, from what I would kind of consider the ground view. Um, so, that text is just shifted up just a little bit. Um, but that would be the, the design is the, the bulldog larger there on the right with the text on the left.
Will this be painted on one side facing a certain direction, or is it gonna face east and west, or?
Uh, it'll be on, just on one side. It'll be where the current, uh, text and logo is. We'll just replace that and sort of, so it faces sort of the intersection there.
Okay.
I don't get to say anything, do whether we like the new dog or not.
Well, you know, I almost put in there that one of your options was to just leave it as is, but I didn't think that would go over well, so.
Was there any talk about putting the Boiling Springs logo, the rolling hills in the trees on there anywhere?
Um, we didn't really talk about that. Um, I, I did want to make sure that we got one town, one university, one community. Um, anything much bigger than that, it'll start to wrap around the tank, so you won't be able to see it all from one, one view. Um, Mike and I kind of discussed, you know, do we, do we do something on the backside or, um, so that's a consideration, I think, for the future, is we could do the, the seal on the backside.
It's the backside face. Is it visible from seventy-four? No?
No, I don't think it is from anywhere, probably.
Maybe, maybe West College.
Maybe, maybe West College a little bit.
My parents' house on Memorial Drive.
Yeah, Memorial Drive would be the best shot. Maybe we can move the dog to the back.
You don't like the dog, Tom?
I don't like the dog. And I have yet to find anybody who does.
They're too deep in. They've already redone the football field.
I heard it cost a day, excess of three million dollars to change the dog.
But that's not unusual for universities to, to do rebrand. And they make people upset and some people love it, so.
You find, you know anybody loves it?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
I, I, I think there's probably one.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, off, off topic.
I love the text and the, and the placement. I think it's equally sized. That's, uh, that's just me. Council, what do you think? Motion or?
How's, how's the bulldog scale compared to what's now? Is it twice the size, three times the size?
Um, I don't, I don't think it's quite twice, but I think it's, I think it's close to that. Um. Mike, you don't remember how tall the old bulldog is on there when we had it painted several years ago? Um.
I see one rendering that says sixteen and the other one says, oh, okay, that's a different scale. Okay, I got you.
The current, the bulldog that's proposed on there is, is sixteen feet, four inches. I would say the current bulldog is ten feet or less, so, uh, one and a half times, maybe, if I had to guess at it.
And just to be clear, Gardner Webb has offered to cover all the cost?
They have. We, you know, we haven't nailed down the final cost and everything, but that was the, um, conversation that initiated the change was, um, them covering the cost of it. Yes, sir. So, again, asking.
How, does the whole tank need repainted?
Uh, no, it would be painting over the existing text and logo and then painting this on there.
How old's the current cover?
Ooh, uh, five?
I'm afraid we're gonna get into a situation where there's a nice big white block of new paint on.
Oh, yeah.
You know, aged.
Mm-hmm.
If we're not matching the paint exactly.
Mike, do you know when they've touched up the paint? It probably hasn't been since they painted the.
Yeah, originally, there was the no logo and then that was painted over.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably been about five years.
Gotcha, yeah.
I just don't want it to look like a big tacky sticker placed on the side of the.
Yeah, um, I will make.
If we're gonna paint, if we're gonna do that, I, it might be a stretch, but I'd like to see the whole tank repainted.
Yeah.
It's just a lot of white paint, but.
I'm not in the favor of the town incurring any expense.
Yes, sir, I would, um.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Me too, yeah.
Wanted to mention that, that the approval tonight is just for the design and, uh, if there's any change in any of those other discussions, it'll come back to council. And I'll ask our tank contractor about that white, white block.
I mean, I'm not opposed to the design. I just don't want it, I'm cautious about a sticker look.
Yeah.
I think Mike's right about the timeframe, because I was on council when that happened and the water tower was repainted. But Gardner Webb didn't want to spend the money to put their logo on it, so that would be four and a half, five years.
I'm unopposed to the design. I'm, I don't, I'm indifferent on the bulldog. I think it's a, a good symbol of our partnership, right, and continue that marketing and, I mean, they, they do bring in a lot of traffic when students are here. So, I mean, there's an economic impact that is acknowledged, so.
And that's the bulldog Gardner Webb's going with now, the logo, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, we might as well. I mean, it, it needs to match, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm for this. It's good.
Did you make that into motion?
Uh, yes. So, I motioned that, uh, we go with this logo and, uh, this Gardner Webb, the dog logo and, um, the wording and the size. And just like Caleb said, the, make sure it doesn't look like a sticker.
I'll second that.
Alright, Ms. Gant with the motion to approve the rendering and Mr. Edwards with the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Okay, that carries unanimously. Alright, next up is considering the bulk, uh, rezonings to, from B one to B two. Certainly has brought a lot of chatter in the community with all the signs up around. Um, Justin?
Thank you, sir. Um, so, the, uh, I, I, y'all may have heard me say this before, but just for, uh, for everybody's reference, I'll repeat myself again. But the, uh, the previous version of our, our UDO, which was pre-November twenty twenty-one, had B one and B two districts. Um, B one was the, uh, predominant district that commercial spaces used. We didn't really have any B two. Um, when we revised the UDO, we decided to focus the B one district on downtown businesses. So, it would be much more, um, restrictive. Um, it had some of those design standards that Mr. Hanson mentioned. Um, but it would be geared more towards our downtown core and B two would be pushed to, um, outside of that core. So, reference Ingalls or KFC, those kind of, uh, businesses. Um, however, since adoption, we've had. However, since adoption, we've had a few potential developers call about some parcels outside of town and say, I'm interested in developing this, can I do this there? And I said, well, no, it's B one, so it's restrictive. It needs to be B two, should be an easy process, and they don't hang up on me, but I don't hear from them again. So our thought was to, we've also had some other instances where people lease buildings and uses have changed, and it's caused conflicts too. So with that information, Mr. Saldo and I put together a letter to send out to parcels outside of the downtown core that were zoned B one, that would be more in line with B two. It was about thirty, and we said, basically, the letter's in your packets, but if, you know, this would be more in line with B two, it's going to open up some more uses for you if you lease the building and have different tenants in the future, or if you're looking to sell it. Help us kind of clean up our, our zoning that, that we recently changed. We had fourteen property owners respond, or fourteen, some had multiple owners, so fourteen properties that were brought forward. They've gone through the notification process, gone before the planning board. The planning board was, was fine with those recommendations for those to be rezoned. We've gotten a few questions from residents about what's going on, but basically, we've told them that nothing's proposed right now. Typically, when there's a rezoning, someone comes in with a proposal, but right now, it's just kind of cleaning up those lines so that maybe in the future, we have some development in certain areas, but that it also is just cleaning up those, those zoning districts. That's the gist of it. Can answer any questions, and we also do need to have a quick public hearing if anyone's here to, to make comment on that, sir.
All right. I will open that public hearing at seven seventeen. Anyone present that would like to speak on the rezoning issue? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, questions and comments?
From my quick review, I would say this is favorable towards our, you know, vision of having the, you know, developer marketing packet. You know, this would be, not that we're actively to push, looking to push anybody out, but it's just one more opportunity to show that we're being proactive and trying to attract productive, giving businesses back to the community, right? So I, I think it's favorable and a very strong start, to be honest. There's a lot of considerations put into this, and, you know, we're always going to run into the situations where we need to take a look at one scenario or another. But overall, I think this is a great progress towards being proactive in our attraction of businesses that are strong contributors to our tax base.
I agree.
Is there a motion to approve the rezoning?
Make a motion to approve, to approve the zoning from B one to B two for the fourteen properties listed.
All right.
Take it in motion.
Mr. Thomas with that motion, Mr. Green with the second. Any further comments, questions?
I wanted, we're going to just make one comment, sir. So I wanted to just give a, a public shout out to Ms. Jennifer Allen, who's on the planning board, who also works for the city of Shelby and put together this map for us. Noah and I don't know how to use G I S like this, so we emailed her and said, can you put together, you know, an overall map of everything? So I wanted to just thank her publicly for that, publicly for that.
I thought she or Noah did.
She must have.
I thought she or Noah did.
Sorry, I shouldn't have said anything.
It looks great, though.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise, and that rezoning is unanimous. Next up is the pavement condition report. Odom Engineering has completed their report. We have funds budgeted in the Powell Bill. See the list of streets in your packet. Mr. Longino, anything?
The only thing I wanted to, to add is for this package, we're recommending to include Mashawn Avenue. So currently, we claim Mashawn on the Powell Bill as a gravel road. You can claim different roads based on their, their condition. It is barely a gravel road. So with Mrs. Jones's plans to relocate Magnolia Mill to a parcel that's towards the end of Mashawn, we're recommending to include it in this bid packet so that we can figure out the cost of paving that road. It would put in curb and gutter and a sidewalk that runs down there to meet our current road standards. But being that she's trying to expand, uh, expand or grow her business within our town, that seems like the, the course of action that we wanted to recommend, uh, that we take to put in the infrastructure. So we don't get lost in the gully down there on Mashawn. So we, we took the, the top, uh, top streets from the list that's included in your packet there and basically totaled those up with the estimate for Mashawn, and we'll bid that out. We'll see how that comes back. We'll hope that prices aren't as inflated as everything else has been lately, and we'll adjust it accordingly. But just wanted to get your approval of the overall report and then moving forward with, with those streets listed.
Comments or questions from council?
So you're going to bid the top three, which is Wichita and North Lindsey and North Beeson, and then Michigan?
We'll bid all of those listed on that cover sheet, so the three, six, eight, yeah.
Good, thanks, Adam.
Is there a motion to approve the updated pavement condition report and bid the recommended streets?
That'll be a public bid opening and review opportunity for the board to, to accept before we.
Yes, sir.
I moved it. I moved to approve the updated pavement report and bid the recommended.
Mr. Green with that motion?
Second.
Second for Mr. Edwards. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. That is adopted unanimously.
From the comments I heard, maybe the gentleman who did the street work we had previously will be in the bidding. I got a lot of good comments about.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the company that did it last summer, or earlier this summer, I guess.
Yeah.
All right, considering downtown parking ordinance changes, turn this over to you.
Thank you, sir. So this really started from some discussions around the downtown master plan, how some of the businesses downtown were a little short on parking, especially between August and June or so, when there's a few more students in town. So we started to, to look at that, to see how we may be able to give some more parking spaces to businesses. And we realized that chapter seventy-three of the Code of Ordinances had references to angled parking and the campus cupboard, which only Tommy knows about, and some other out of date things. So, oh, sorry, and Mr. Litten too. I text Mayor Thomas first, and he wasn't aware, so then I had to start going down the list.
I'm older than Neil.
I was like, where was the campus cupboard?
Well, I'm older.
I can remember, I can remember before it was campus covered.
He got me there.
So we, so we started looking at the ordinance and taking out some of the old references. You have a, a clean copy in your packets first, and then you have the, the redline copy, just to highlight some of the changes. Well, the, the change for the downtown businesses would be to designate from Quinn Circle to the stoplight as those spaces strictly for patrons of downtown businesses only. So we would put signage up, and we would do some notifications first and then enforcement later of, of that area just for the downtown businesses. We did take away the time restriction for that area. I know in the past, there's, I think there's been some patrons of particularly the hair salon that have taken maybe more than an hour or two, and so that's caused some conflict. So we wanted to just remove that timeframe off of there. But like with any of this, we can come back and revise it later if we, we need to change it. But we took it from, so we took the, the time limit off of that area, but then we made the time restriction consistent to two hours across the board. We had some areas of one hour and some areas of two hours. I know we looked, I think, last, last fall or so, and we had some students that were parking for just over an hour, an hour spots. And so we wanted to just make that kind of a, um, consistent down the, down the street. Some other changes we made were, well, really just removing that old language. We, we added in Saturdays and Sundays for parking limited to ten minutes, except between eight and six on the parking spots near the post office, and then there's a few parking spots near Turner, in front of Turner's on, on East College. I think that is the, oh, and then we did change the public parking lot at one oh nine South Main, which is the downtown parking lot where the concert will be on Thursday, and the parking lot at the community park and the town hall parking lot. We just changed that to no overnight parking without prior authorization. So before, it was open from five A M. to ten P M., and I don't think that's really been an issue, but we said if anybody needs to park over there for any reason, they can come into town hall or give us a call, and we can kind of pre-approve that, but. Any questions on any of those changes? A lot of, a lot of red lines, but.
Has there been any discussion about, like, parking meters and pay to park type things?
You know, there has been. I actually had a downtown business owner say that he would be in favor of parking meters. That's certainly something we can look at. My first thought was numbered spaces and maybe one kiosk that we don't have poles, you know, down the street. But, yeah, I, I didn't know if, if council would be interested in looking at that, but that's something we can.
Could you wait till I'm off, council?
Okay.
I also, university towns do that a whole lot to help control that flow, and, and they generate some revenue. It's not about generating revenue, it's help sort of control and, and the business districts and, and those type things. If you go to Boone, you're going to pay, and, and, you know, you can pay all day, or you can, but the town does get a certain amount of revenue, and it helps the businesses turn, turn over the, the customers, so.
Just curious.
Yeah, there's a lot of this at, a lot of colleges. Just about everywhere at Chapel Hill had parking meters.
Chapel Hill, U N C, I mean, you name it.
Oh, sure.
And not that we want to.
But we are neither one of those.
Yeah, not that we want to pick on the university either, but it, it just sort of helps move things along with time, either pay for it. Sometimes people pay and then they leave before the time's up, and so it's, it's additional space and revenue for the town. I, I'd want to be cautious that the volume of meters and enforcement does not, like, enforcement becomes a need for a parking meter made, right? And that cost is more than the meters even generate. Yeah, exactly, yeah. So what are we doing, right? Let alone just upsetting traffic.
I, I believe probably some business owners would like it, but I think most town residents would not.
Yeah.
None.
Would definitely not. I think that would have an impact on our downtown park, go walk, you know, go walk, exercise, thing like that. I, I would not be in favor of it.
I'm not sold that we have the volume for those events and that, you know.
To me, it'd be a last resort.
If you had a kiosk, most people wouldn't understand how to use it, including me.
And some of them are, and some of them are difficult to use.
When I go to Charlotte, I can't figure out how to use it parked, so I go find somewhere like a, a parking deck. I can go through an arm and get a ticket.
I think the rest of these red lines are excellent, though. From what I can see, it appears that there was definitely a lot of nearby business and, you know, destination use, understanding of how we came up with these time limits, you know, it's like, are you running the subway to get a sandwich? Okay, ten minutes, right? So.
Yeah, with hair salons, you know, something like that, they might need more than two hours.
Yeah. Well.
Just a while.
No, I like the idea of making sure that we're making people aware of it, doing proper signage, and even the fact that we have increased the penalty for the violation of it, so. Looks, looks good, and I know a lot of thought and discussion went into it. Do we have any accounting or rough idea of what signage we need to change and how that's going to impact, I mean?
We're already working on some signage for the downtown parking lot, just in, for parking in general with the rebranding on there. But nothing more than probably four signs for each kind of corner, no parking between signs kind of thing.
A couple thousand at most.
Yeah, at the most, yeah.
On motion to approve ordinance twenty-two oh eight oh two dash, or point oh one, amending chapter seventy-three for the parking schedule?
Mr. Edwards has made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gant with the second. Any further questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise, and that carries unanimously. And we have a, a letter of appreciation that will be sent to our legislators and, and thanks for the grants that we have been able to secure, including the one, the large one going to Gardner Webb. There's one for Speaker Moore, for Representative Hastings, as well as Senator Alexander. I'll just read one, they're, they're all three the same. This letter serves to express our sincere appreciation for the grants you were able to secure for our community through the recent state budgeting process. These funds will help to transform our downtown. The combined efforts of Gardner Webb and the town of Boiling Springs are sure to be a catalyst for enhancements not only in our town, but for the region. Our goals for a pedestrian-friendly and business-oriented city center are ambitious, but we believe that anything worth doing is worth doing the right way. With your assistance, we are moving closer to making these, these goals a reality. We thank you for your continued support of Boiling Springs and look forward to hosting you in town very soon. That letter will be signed by all of us. All right, Mr. Longino?
Thank you, sir. So I have a few things. First, our lead for North Carolina Fellow started yesterday. So I'm going to ask him to come up and just give a quick introduction of, of himself and just tell us a, a minute or two about who he is, so. No pressure, you're good.
All right, sounds great. Hi, I'm Grayson Sontag. Like you said, I'm the lead for North Carolina Fellow through AmeriCorps. I was, I just graduated from Davidson College in May, and I'm very happy to be able to be kind of in the same region and, and be able to come out and help the good folks of Boiling Springs. I'm originally from South Carolina, and I was born and raised over there. I'm from, currently living in South Sumter, South Carolina. My dad is the dean of U S C Sumter, so it's great to be back in a, a town with another college. I really, I really enjoy that atmosphere. I've always been kind of bouncing around to different places with different universities for him, so it's great to kind of continue that here and just absolutely thrilled to be able to finally get, get going and get here and get started.
You don't know Thomas McElveen, do you?
I do, yes.
We'll talk afterwards.
Yeah, I got the opportunity, though. Craziest thing, walking around in Washington, D.C. one day, showed up in the office we were working in, and, yeah, I was, he seems to know people everywhere.
We were, I was a freshman at Davidson College with him, so I.
Oh, my goodness, yeah. It was great.
Good deal, we'll talk after for sure. Welcome.
Welcome, Grayson.
So my second point is that we have received our second tranche of A R P funds. So that is the final tranche that we, that we'll receive. We'll be, be discussing in the coming months how to allocate those funds, and we'll be bringing that back to you all. Also, yesterday, our website refresh went live, so if you visit www.boylingspringsnc.net, it might look a little different. It's still got the same sort of content and buttons and things, but the layout's different and incorporates more of our new branding into it. And in the coming months, we're going to be digging into the content of the actual pages to update that as well and make sure that Police Department and Finance, Public Works, those pages have current information. And we'll probably be transitioning some stuff over to MuniCode to make it more centralized in one location. But the, the, the refresh turned out really great. We're happy with it, so check that out if you haven't. And the last thing I've got is we have a concert this Thursday. The music on main is going to be in the downtown parking lot between the Greenway office and the Talk of the Town Salon. We are going to close the, the small area of the parking lot kind of between those two businesses and the alleyway late tonight and start setting up the lights that we had during web stock in that area. We're going to keep that closed so that no, you know, trucks go through there and, and take those out. But if you see Public Works crews out tomorrow, they'll be working on that. And then early Thursday morning, Gardner Webb will be bringing a stage over for us to use that they're lending to us. And then you'll see food trucks and people coming in Thursday afternoon. It's from six to eight. We've got that. We've got that one band playing. Travelin' Pig will be there, Pelicans, Donut I Love You, and we will be collecting school supplies. So, we've been collecting school supplies here at town hall, and the YMCA's had a box over there, and then we're going to have a table for folks to bring school supplies, and hopefully we'll gather a bunch of those and be able to distribute those to local schools.
Awesome, and that one band was the first band that played at Webstock. They were the opening band, if anybody was at Webstock. They were really good, I'm excited.
Please, please hope for no summer showers that afternoon. They held out for today, so.
Councilman Litten's weather forecast was that it would be warmer than Webstop.
Guaranteed.
Mr. Schweppi?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Green?
Couple of things. First of all, I'd like to express sympathy to former councilman Cliff Amrick and the loss of his mother. So, I know he's, that's going to be going through some difficult times here in the next few days. Another one, and I just thought of this one, I know a while back we had the issue with people, horse riders coming through town and not being very diligent about the droppings and things, and we actually passed an ordinance. Twice in the last week, I've got behind an Amish buggy in town. And I was just curious, is that buggy legal with our ordinance?
I think the side, I think it was just sidewalks is what we dealt with with the ordinance.
I thought it was sidewalks and streets. I'm not sure.
I'd have to look.
I thought it was anywhere, really.
I did too.
Anywhere.
And if so, I think we might want to revisit that, because I don't think we would want to tell an Amish buggy that you can't come through town. Would we, that was not our intent.
Right, no, yeah, it was not.
Twice, you know, I've seen, I'm pretty sure it's the same buggy, two gentlemen in it. And actually, the thought I had when I was behind it was, I'd rather be buying a golf cart. I mean, literally, I had that thought, because I do think from the visibility and things of that, it was just a little different to see an Amish buggy in town. And I've heard from other people that they, they've seen them, you know, there's a, you know, a group of them up around Pope Hill, and so maybe we might want to look at that to see. Like Sam, that was not our intent of that ordinance. Was it?
I feel almost certain we, we had that exception in there because of that religious exemption. I'm almost certain that that would still be allowed.
It wouldn't be, that's not a religion.
For whatever reason, I feel certain that that was within the, that they can still ride on the street, almost, but it'd be worth looking into.
Yeah, absolutely.
Last thing, I had a, and I think maybe you've had this complaint too, on Wichita was chickens and these things over there. I just wondered if we were looking at.
We are, so actually, at the last planning board meeting, Mr. Tom Bates formally asked staff to, to look at, into a livestock ordinance perhaps? And so, we've, we've started to look at that. We've gathered some other ordinances, and we're going to put something together to take to planning board potentially this month, but maybe September.
Last thing, I had a town citizen speaking about the mural that we painted, and he asked, and he's asked me this a couple of times. Back, I think, last month, I told him I would mention it to the council, but I forgot it, so he reminded me of it last night, about the possibility of seeing if there's any interest in repainting the mural that's on, that, if you remember years ago, when the bicycles came through and they painted the mural on front of the old John Deere place, and that's kind of faded out to see if maybe there was any, any interest or any, any in redoing that. It did kind of become a, you know, kind of a landmark or something there in front of the building. It's about faded away. I did make an effort to go by and look at it, it's about faded away. And I don't know who paint, I know who painted it, but I don't know the cost or anything. I mean, I know the gentleman who painted it at that time, so I didn't know if that's something that, of course, would have to be up to the property owner probably, is whether, which I think is trademark now.
I think so, yeah.
So, I told him I'd mention it, so I mentioned it, and that's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Litten?
Okay, I was approved as a substitute for the GLCMP. I can attend with Tommy, but if Tommy's there, I can't vote. So, there was a training process on that. Mr. Saldo attended that as well, and then there was another process, I can't remember the exact word, where I had to be vetted by the Ethics Committee, so I was approved. But the lady said that's the first time in the history that she knew that Bowling Springs had an attending member and a substitute, and that's a lot of information, so.
It is.
I thank Tommy for doing that job, and I hope he keeps doing that job, because, boy, they give you a lot of information. That's a big, that's a big outfit. I, I agree, we, we need to look at that livestock ordinance, so I'm, I'm in favor of that. I'm so proud we recognize Crest High School, even though they're not in our town, we don't consider them from Shelby. They're Crest High School from Bowling Springs. I was so excited, I dug out my horse tie in my thirty-eight-year-old Crest High School classroom, so gratulations to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Nothing further, that's already been spoken.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I just appreciate the WAD doing a great presentation tonight, and we were still considering things there, and we don't need to take our eye off that. I think Caleb, Caleb, Mr. Edwards and I are on that committee, so we'll, I haven't heard of any meetings.
I haven't either.
So, you know of any meetings that they're having?
No, they, they take June and July off, I think, so we'll let you know when the next one is.
Perfect.
Alright, great. But no, I echo the same thing, Mr. Litten about Crest High School. I wanted Jeremy to say some things tonight, he got out of here really quick, but really, we are blessed to have great schools here in this community and a great community, so that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gant?
Oh, yes, and I, I want to praise Crest High School too. Wonderful school, Jeremy's done a wonderful job with those kids, and it's just amazing, you know. Well, of course, we have, two of us here have seniors that just graduated, so it's unbelievable at some of the changes that had, that has gone on with Crest High School, and the kids have really, really progressed and matured, and I do want to thank the coaches too at Crest High School for what they've done. They've done a lot with our kids. And I also wanted to let you know, or ask you, who else is on the Streetscape Committee, Subcommittee, because?
Me and Mr. Green.
Okay, alright, so is there just two, or are you needing somebody else?
Yeah, it's just two, and I think at the, the meeting you were absent from a couple of months ago, we talked about committee assignments, and the council said if you're willing to be on that committee, that your perspective as a, you know, somebody who's downtown and works downtown would be, would be great, a great addition.
Will you just let me know? I mean, I'd be glad to. But that's all I have.
Alright, I'll echo the praise for Crest High School. The, the schools around here, Boiling Springs and Springmore, the, the work that staffs and councils and just the community that we live in, such that a couple of elementary schoolers that grew up in this system can stand up here and, you know, one be a mayor and one be a principal. That's a pretty cool moment for me and Mr. Shields, I, I can tell you that. And other than that, between now and the next time, Tanya and I will be delivering our babies to college, so pray for us. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
I just want to tell Mr. Litten that I still wear my Crest High School classroom from nineteen sixty-three.
There you go.
I wasn't even born.
I have more wisdom than you do.
There you go.
That you do.
Were you in the first class or not?
I was in the third. Nineteen sixty-one was the first class.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And Crest High School was located right down the street in Bowling Springs.
Oh, yeah.
I had a leather jacket, I don't know where it is, I'm going out to it, something's wearing my.
Oh, John, quick question for you.
You know, he's, he's usually not the ones to shy away from.
He, there's a, there's a football meeting just in my, well. Well, he just had to be, I forgot to remind him until yesterday. Oh, he will be glad to, for sure. We might not, we might be careful what you're asking for.